Gentlemen, my name is Tom Daley. I'm your moderator. And I've missed you all. I know you probably haven't missed me, but I want to call to order our 2023 Town of Shasberry Town Meeting. I'd like to start by asking you all, please, to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Typically, typically, the next thing is I ask for a moment of silence and talk about some of the things that we need to remember, we're grateful for, and I had a bunch of things I wanted to say, but the main thing is that we all need to, as we have in the past, though it's been a couple of years, this is real, how we in America govern ourselves. We're allowed to gather here, we're allowed to engage in debate, we're allowed to give our full names, our faces can be shown, we don't have to do something anonymously or ask that our last name not be used or whatever because we're afraid of of consequences that come from within our, within our country, within our government. So I guess what I, what I, what I'm asking is everybody in the moment of silence to just keep. But just keeping in mind that this is a real privilege that we are allowed to gather the way that we gather. I've been doing this for, I don't know, 35 or 38 years, I don't know how many, but I never, I never cease to amaze me how simple, how amateur, but how real we are in the way that we govern ourselves. This is where it all begins. The shenanigans that might go on elsewhere, the power is here in all the people and in every town throughout Vermont, and this is the way it's done throughout the country. And that's, that, this is something, when we look around what's going on in the world, we are so doggone fortunate to be living in this country that we live in. Enough said. Oh, come on, just one thing. We're here and our servicemen have our back, servicemen and women have our back overseas, here in our country. We're able to freely engage in, we're going about with our lives and, and knowing that our freedoms remain intact because we have people who are dedicated, military, our civil servants overseas, to ensuring that we're able to do exactly what we do. And this is, this is showing an honor to them by us carrying out, you know, our civic duty, meeting and doing the things that we do. My microphone OK?
Yep.
OK. OK. Let's see. I should introduce our board, our select board. Art Whitman is chair. Martha Hornwall is, Cornwell, sitting next to him, Mike Chianowski over there, Joe Barber is here. Tony Krulikowski, Art is the chairman, Tony Krulikowski is the vice chair, and he is participating by Zoom because he's a little bit under the weather. I want to thank the North Shaft Lions and the Historical Society for the supper that they, they put on. And I want Dave Durfee to come up and give us just a couple of minutes. This is usually when, if you recall, Alice Miller would come up. And there's Alice, and I always had to have a stopwatch with her. I had to argue with Dave to get him to go more than two minutes.
Thanks, Tom. And you're still living under the shadow of Alice Miller. Hi, Alice, wherever you are. Well, so I am, I am the state representative for Shasberry and part of Sunderland and, and Glossimbury, and Alice was my predecessor, but it has been for, this is my fifth year now of coming before you, although didn't get to do it in person the last couple of years, so it's great to be back. I did want to also thank whoever was responsible for the delicious food that some of us got to have beforehand, nice tradition, and thank you to everybody who, who brought something. And I'm just going to give a, a quick, a quick update on what's been happening in Montpelier. I did say I would keep it short and I'll, I'll probably not have time to say everything I'd like to say or for you to maybe ask the questions that you would want to ask. So if you don't see me afterwards, and I may have to run up to Sunderland because I'm, as I said, also representing Sunderland in the legislature, to their town meeting. So if you don't catch me, in the report that everybody has a copy of or that's available in the back, there's a report that I've written out, it has my contact information there, and you can feel free to reach out by email or give me a call. If you're not, if you don't get my regular monthly email during the session and you'd like to get that, you can also just let me know and I'll add you to the list. We meet from January to May typically. I'm up in Montpelier, I drive up every Monday evening and come back on Friday. This week is a week off for town meetings, so I'll be around all week. The, the legislature reorganized last year after the census, so I, I have a bigger portion of Sunderland than I did before, but, but Shasberry is the primary part of the district I represent. So there are a lot of new faces in Montpelier, and things have gotten off to a slightly slower start than usual, which I expect to pick up when we get back next, next week. We've been talking since the, since the pandemic really got going about a couple of key things. One is broadband internet. When people started needing Zoom and realized that they couldn't get on or kept dropping the connection, that, that was a situation that needed to be addressed. And I'm glad to report that here in Bennington County, thanks to the work of, among other people, Tim Scoggins, we're way ahead of the rest of the state. And Shasberry is, I think, about 90% connected already. I got a notice today saying that the addresses that aren't currently set up should be by the fourth quarter of this year, so that's, that's Old Deepa Road, north end of 7A, a few other, a few other roads up in that sort of part of town. So if you're not already on cable, you don't have high-speed internet, that should be coming. The state's also been really focused on trying to do something about our childcare system, and system might be the wrong word. We've got sort of a disjointed way of handling childcare in Vermont. There's been a lot of work done. I think we're arriving at a point of consensus about how we can make it more affordable for families to have childcare, to make it more of a, a career that childcare providers will, will find can sustain them. And that, that's, hopefully, as I said, something is going to be kicking in sometime this session. I'll check back next year and we'll see how we are with that. I am, we have committee, we do all our work in committees, or most of our work in committees, and I'm on a new committee this year, I'm chairing the Agriculture, Food Resiliency, and Forestry Committee. So I'm, I'm hoping that in that capacity, which, which deals with a lot of rural issues, that I'll be able to be a better and stronger voice for the communities that I represent. You can feel free to reach out to me anytime on any issue, though. I spend a lot of time connecting people with the right resource in Montpelier of one sort or another. I'll just close by saying that financially, fiscally, the state's in pretty good shape. We've, we've continued, I think, to benefit from the, the infrastructure money, the pandemic relief money that not only went to the state government, but also to all of us. And we're still spending that money. The sales tax in particular has been a consistently strong revenue source, and that all goes into the education fund. So when we have, when we collect more in sales taxes, it's, it's good in the sense that it means property taxes are going to be lower for schools. And I think that when we vote tomorrow on the school tax, it's going to be a reduction in, from what it was last year, and school taxes have been pretty level over the past few years. So I know Tom has got his watch, stopwatch out, I'm going to stop there, but please feel free to find me anytime and do, if you want to be on my list. I only send out an email once a month or so, so it won't be, it won't be a lot, but let me know if you'd like to be on that. Thank you.
David, thank you. Thank you. Where did Alice go? There she is. Alice, I was just thinking about what I said before, I did not mean to offend you in any way by making the wisecracks about the amount of time and that sort of thing, comparing you to him and everything. I moved, I don't live where I used to anymore. Yes.
I don't think that David.
Could we have, would you come to the microphone, please? There we go.
I'm sorry, I broke my leg and I'm getting a lot better, it takes a bit to get around. David Durfee didn't tell you how impressive it is, that he has, after a short time in the legislature, been appointed as chair of the agricultural committee and a whole area, David, are you with me?
He's right around.
David, where are you? A whole area of water has been moved into your committee, isn't that correct? Tell us what that is.
It's the food resiliency section, not water, but food resiliency.
Foods. Anyway, he, he really deserves a hand for what he has been doing up there.
Great, great. Thank you, Alice. So at some point in all of this, I have to read the warning. Usually, the warning is in, it's, it's in our town report on page 16. Usually, I get a, a motion to dispense with reading the warning, been made and seconded. Is there anybody that objects to skipping that to save some time? And a second? I'm going to do something I've always wanted to do because I never knew how it worked. By unanimous consent, I'm going to adopt that. Let me digress for a minute. Unanimous consent. I've always wondered, what does that mean? I hear the, the Senate and, you know, our congressmen say that stuff. And it's just kind of what it means is that it's incidental, it's not something that we should take up a whole bunch of time on. And when I say by unanimous consent, that's an opportunity for somebody to jump up and say, no, I want a formal action or something like that. And I used up more time than reading the warning anyway. So we move along here. I haven't done this in a couple of years, so please bear with me. OK, housekeeping. Before we get to the articles and our business, first, you, when you're recognized by the moderator, you'll address me. Please give your name when you're, when you are recognized, we, we need it in the minutes. I'd ask that you come up and speak into the microphones so that everybody on Zoom and remotely can hear us as well as it gets into the record properly. I will state the article, I'll look for somebody to make a motion to move the article in a second, and then I'll open the floor for debate. When it comes time for voting, the people that are on Zoom or Facebook, you can't vote. Those are the rules. So the voting is, is from the floor here. Don't pick up the chairs when we get done, usually we always pick them up, don't pick them up. And then the last thing. How many people do we have mixed in with the audience that are not residents of the Town of Shasberry? By show of hands, please. OK. You cannot vote, you cannot speak, you cannot comment, you cannot, please don't speak under your breath. And when we go to vote, what I always say is the people that are next to you now know that, who you are, so if they do vote, and they shouldn't be voting, I'm talking to the people on either side of you, elbow, sharp in the ribs, because they're not supposed to. The olden days, we'd have a corral over here, you'd all have to go sit in the corral, and we don't do that anymore. So, all right, duly warned. Yes?
People who are not registered voters of Shasberry, could you address that? You asked who does up Shasberry.
OK, so what, I think where you're going is anybody who is not a registered voter cannot vote either. OK. You all know who you are if you're not a registered voter. And so you can't, you can't vote. OK, so let's go to the articles. If you look on page 18. I'll start with Article 1, to hear the reports of the town officers and to take action thereon. This is always a strange one. The reports are in here. Long time ago, we used to, before my time, actually, no, I'm going to date myself, 30, 40 years ago, we used to actually, the, the town officers would stand up and give a report, tax collector, treasurer, that sort of stuff. They're all published in here now. This is how the reports are, so to speak, being heard. This would be a time that if there's, if you found any mistakes or any errors, things like that, you would want to raise them. And to take action thereon, I guess it's always informal, but what I'd like is a motion from the floor that we accept the reports as presented in here. Motion's been made, do I have a second? There's a second. Any questions or debate or, or discussions about it? All in favor of hearing the reports of the town officers and taking action thereon, that is acknowledging them, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article 2. To determine, A, shall select board members each receive an annual stipend of $750; B, shall the board of auditors be paid a wage at a rate of $15 per hour; C, shall the first and second constable be paid a wage at the rate of $15 per hour? We can take that motion, or we can take that article as a single motion, or we can divide it. Right now, I would entertain a motion to take that article as stated. Is there a second? And there's a second. OK. Comments, questions, or concerns about, let's say, about A, the select board?
Do you know how long the salary has been set, or, or stipend at $750?
How long they've been getting $750? They do get $750 now? No.
$650 last year, this is, this is.
$650 last year, this would be the first year they'd get $750.
Really?
Yeah.
It seems like they ought to get more. Seriously, I mean, if that's, you know, a lot of work that goes into it, I realize it's, it's.
Could you, Karen, come on up to the mic, please, because I think you might, you might be making a motion.
Well, I just have to amend it, right? Would I have to put forward amendments to the motion?
Yes.
I would amend the motion that we pay the select board $1,000 a year, each one. I sat on the select board for 10 years, there's a lot of past select board members here. When I left, maybe 10 years ago, I don't know if we were getting $500, $700, I, I don't know, but there's a lot that goes into it, and people really ought to understand that, and, you know, even $1,000 isn't enough, but I think it's an acknowledgement by the town about all the work that you do do and the grief that you take sometimes. So I would, I would make that motion that we offer $1,000 for the select board members.
OK, thank you, and it's been seconded? OK, so I've got an amendment to the article, so let's talk about that amendment that has been seconded, and that is to increase that $750 annual stipend to $1,000 for the selectmen. Some discussion, questions? You ready to vote on it? You're voting on only the amendment to the article. All those in favor of increasing the select board members to each receive an annual stipend of $1,000, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're back to the main motion.
Tom, I think we've got it. It was Maureen McClintock, I believe.
OK, I'll, yeah, I'll make sure, I'll make sure I'll get the name for a second. OK, shall the board of auditors be paid a wage at a rate of $15 per hour? Shall the first and second constable be paid a wage at a rate of $15 per hour? Debate, amendments, comments, questions? Yes, in the back.
What does the constable actually do?
We don't have one.
Their duties are in the statutes, the green books, the laws of Vermont, but right now we don't have any constables. So it's quite a savings, actually, you know?
I've been told we have one. The term, his term expires tonight.
Oh, we have one that the term expires tonight, so you won't get the $15. OK, any other questions, concerns, comments? You ready to vote? All those in favor of paying our select board members $1,000 annually, paying our board of auditors a wage at the rate of $15 per hour, and paying our first and second constables, if we have any in the future, $15 per hour, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. OK, the next one. Shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Friday, November 10th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise postmarked no later than Friday, November 10th, 2023? I need a motion that that be when we authorize collection of taxes. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Karen, second? We got a bunch of seconds. Maureen. Yep. OK. Discussion, questions about it? It's kind of always about the same time of year, it's that, that same day, that first week, week and a half of November. Ready to vote on it? All those in favor of authorizing collection of taxes by the treasurer due in hand on it before Friday, November 10th, 5:00 p.m., or likewise postmarked no later than Friday, November 10th, 2023, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, so ordered. OK. Next item. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,527,046 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2024, the amount of such sums to be raised by property taxes to be reduced by non-tax revenues, non-tax revenues and reserve funds? I need a motion.
Tom, we have to, because they're getting more in the stipend, we've got to change that. We have a new number for you.
Hold on just a second.
We have a new number for you to approve.
The budget number has changed.
Okay, so the budget, they went up by.
He's got it right there.
I told you if you gave him a raise. OK, I got to back up, and I got to say, shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,528,000? Excuse me. $2,528,296 to defray the town's general highway expenses for fiscal year 2024, the amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. I need a motion. And I need a second. Now I open up the, the floor, but what I'd like to start with is having the select board do their presentation on the budget. And the budget is in our report between pages 29 and 45. Art, you want to address the, the budget, please?
Good evening, everybody, and welcome back. This is great. This, again, like Tom said, this is the purest form of democracy when we can meet like this. I realize there's a motion on the floor for the budget, but we thought we'd combine the report of the select board at this time, go over briefly what happened in the past that kind of reflects on what's going to happen in the future and that sort of stuff. The first thing I just want to say is what a fantastic town this is. The way that everybody works so well in Cole Hall, the road crew, Ron Jennings, please stand up, the, the road crew has done a fantastic job. Is there anybody else from the road crew, Dave Worthington or anybody? OK, well, again, the fire department, the fire department from this town is recognized throughout the state as being one of the best. The transfer station, it's, it's like a social thing up there, we even recognized it in the town report. The school system, this is a model system for, for Bennington County. You don't have any of the dramatic stuff all the time going on here, it's just, it runs so smoothly. And I'm really proud of this town, and I hope you are too, seriously. To review what's went on this past year, I think one of the most important things I want to point out is that we voted as a town to do away with the election of listers. We always had three listers. With being replaced by an assistant to the assessing company that we have under contract, the name is Nimrock, that does all our appraising because the state says you have to have a professional appraiser do your, do your appraising. Janet Jenks was that person. She has worked diligently going through a stack of un, uncompleted permits. She has raised, or we have raised the grand list in this town by over $4 million in the first year alone, by getting rid of that backlog of stuff, and it's still climbing, and so. And the town has already contracted for a complete reappraisal, '25 possibly?
'25 to '26.
'25 to '26 is when it'll be done. The state has always given us money every year, we have plenty of money to do this, there'll be a complete reappraisal, which will get a lot of things, because of the bubble of real estate and all that sort of stuff, there's a lot of things skewed, and we're on the list to get it done, OK? So that, that isn't coming into. So that isn't coming in the future. As far as other projects, a major project was the replacement of a huge culvert in Shasbury Hollow, what we call Hollow Hideaway at that intersection. It took six years of engineering for them to make up their mind how we would do it. The culvert had to be taken out, a temporary bridge put in, a freak thunderstorm in the afternoon took out everything that had been done, and between the contractor and the road crew, we had things back going before dark. It really was a team effort. And again, this is the way this town works. We purchased a couple pieces of equipment that are going to help us with the roads. One is an excavator on tracks, so we can do a good job of ditching. The state has always told us we have to get the water away from the roads and that sort of stuff. And we have a tractor with a mower on it to mow the bush back and the grass and all that sort of stuff. We've always had a contract that it only gets done once a year. Now we can do it multiple times and do a lot better job. The only, so far, there are just two major projects. In fact, we've put out bids for them. One is there's another culvert up in Shasbury Hollow that needs to be replaced according to the state. And also, we finally have all the permits necessary to do drainage on the soccer fields at Howard Park. We want to resurface the basketball court, and we want to do something in the parking lot to control traffic a little bit there. So those bids, we'll be opening those bids in just a couple of weeks. We continue to work on the roads. Every year, we find places where it went to pieces in mud season, we fix them or put drainage in, try to help with that sort of stuff. And I think a real big effort this year is going to be tree work. It is scary how many, when you drive down some of these dirt roads and look up and see these huge trees with big limbs, dead trees, big limbs hanging out over the road that can come down, taking out power lines and possibly hurting people. But the state is emphasizing the importance of keeping the shade off the roads, the roads will dry out quicker, snow will melt faster, all that sort of stuff, okay? And we continue to have sinking funds. I think it's important to point out that every piece of equipment we have, we have a sinking fund behind it. So when that reaches its, when it has to be replaced, there is already money there to replace it. We don't pay interest when we have to go out and borrow money to do all this. The money is already there, and we're constantly watching that and having it kept up so that even the fire, the next fire trip is probably going to be half a million dollars or more. We have, we're anticipating that and have money away in a sinking fund. That will be, when we start talking about the budget, you'll see that money, money in reserves, that's what that means, okay? As most of you know, the water system in Shasbury buys its water from North Bennington. We were hit with a price increase without any warning. In fact, we'd already sent out the bills, because we read the meters, sent out the bills, and all of a sudden, North Bennington says, well, you've got to charge more. And they also hit us with a bond payment for work that was done to their system in North Bennington. We asked for a clarification or to talk about it. We weren't happy with what they said. We asked for mediation, they refused. So we did not pay the increase, and we did not pay the water, the bond payment. So they sued us. After a long, very expensive, very strenuous court system, a judge finally said, you will go to mediation. We went to mediation, we have an agreement, we are no longer responsible for the, any improvements made in North Bennington, okay? It was rough. So now that we have that cleared up, now we can start thinking about making improvements to our water system. The system was put back in the 1930s. At that time, there was, the accepted piping system was called concrete asbestos. It has a lifetime of about 100 years. We're coming up on that. I don't think it's going to collapse immediately at 100 years, but there will be areas that it will fail before other ones fail and that sort of stuff. So we have come up with a three-phase plan whereby over next, at least 10 or 15 years, we will end up replacing it in three different phases. The first phase is going to be from the intersection to the main, which is down by Frank Howard's Art Museum, where it used to be, that's where the main line goes across the road. We'll come down Route 7, 7A, go up allegedly drivewayways, go all the way to Church Street Corner, go down Church Street, all the way across the railroad tracks, down to Route 67. And that article is in one of the articles, and I'll explain that to you later, but, so we'll be talking about the money for that. And probably the most exciting thing of that is the ARPA money, as David spoke. Shasbury received at least over $1.1 million. The first thing we did was we formed an ARPA committee, and thank you very much for those that served on it. They did an excellent job. They surveyed the citizens of Shasbury, they surveyed the school, which makes sense, because these are the people who are going to be coming up and getting the benefit of this, okay? One of the major things that we noticed as the surveys came in and was analyzed and that sort of stuff is that there wanted to be a community center or a, something more than just Cole Hall. A community center design or concept type of thing. Realizing that, the first thing the Select Board did was we bought the 2.2 acres or whatever it is right behind Cole Hall. There is an old factory on it, the old Shea Mill. It's solid, but I don't think it can be used for anything. It's awful rough inside. We've boarded it up, it's secured and all that sort of stuff. We'll be cleaning around it and all that sort of stuff. But the point is that we have reestablished an economic development committee that's going to be looking at how this money is to be spent. We are, have created what's called a Cole Hall Committee. Cole Hall has to be brought up to ADA standards. It's got to be, if we're going to be there, it's got to be different than what it is now downstairs. We've actually spent some money making sure there wasn't any mold problems and all that sort of stuff. So I think we're free, we're set to go ahead with more building and design down there when necessary. One of the things that I heard, somebody was kind of mentioned that they hope we didn't spend that money for running the town, and I can assure you, it will not be. In fact, every, every meeting when Karen Mallinger, the treasurer, comes in and shows what's in reserves, there it is, ARPA money, over a million dollars still there. Aloni Dexter, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, so let's talk the budget now. That's what the floors can... Okay, this is a pie chart of the budget you just voted on.
Yeah, we have voted on the budget. We're going to vote that.
That you just made a motion to talk about, right?
Yeah, it's a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor. Number one is the Department of Public Works. That's your road crew, that's your soccer fields, that's your playgrounds, it's all that sort of stuff. Department of Public Works. Number two, general government. This is all the salaries, all the wages, everything to do with Cole Hall, running the town the way it has to be run. Number three is transferred to reserves. This is what I was talking about earlier. This is the money that we're always setting aside to make sure that when, when something needs to be done, the money is there. I want to point out number four. Garbage is an expensive business. The transfer station takes up, is our fourth most expensive thing. I'm pointing this out because probably in the future, we'll have to be raising our tipping fee, we'll have to start having a better understanding of what we could charge for and that sort of stuff, because this, it costs the town a lot of money, even though we do collect some money, it does not nearly cover what it costs. Garbage is an expensive business. Debt service, we only have three things that we're paying for. The garage, obviously, is number one, and then the track excavator and the mower, the two recently purchased ones are, we have loans for those, very low interest loans, because we get them through the state. The budget, if you go down through the budget column, you'll see what was, what was budgeted for last year, for the last fiscal year, what we spent. And there may be some cases where more was spent than what was budgeted, was budgeted, but you have to look at the revenue side, because in a lot of cases, for instance, we bought some, or we spent more for highway use, because we sold off a lot of used equipment. We had an auction, or went to an auction, that sort of stuff. We've received many grants. We also, the state was very generous in their Class 3 road fund, gave us more than what we had anticipated, that sort of stuff. So at the end of over a $2 million budget, we were off by $24,000. I think that's quite remarkable. This year's budget is 5.5% increase over what it was last year, which is below the rate of inflation. And for the last seven years that Dave and the Select Board have been coming up with budgets, there has not been a single year where the budget was more than what the adjusted rate of inflation was for that year. Dave, thank you very much for what you did. So I'll turn it back over to the moderator, so you can ask if you have any questions or anything else, we'll be glad to answer them.
So the motion on the floor is, is to vote the budget, as we amended it. How about some questions, concerns, comments from the floor? Select Board's here to answer. Do we have anybody online? No, you're paying them more money.
Make us work.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Yes, I'm Carl Corman. I have a question or an observation about the ARPA situation. The ARPA committee, I believe, presented its report on November 7th, about four months ago, almost to the day. And at that time, it was explained that we would have various public meetings to discuss how that money was going to be spent. As of today and as of the calendar for the town, no meetings have been scheduled. And I would like to know if that is going to occur. I understand there's an economic committee, but that is not the same thing as having an open meeting like this, since this would be the first time that the town would be spending this kind of money without a vote. And alternatively, I would suggest that if it is determined that a particular expenditure of those funds will be attributed to perhaps a community center or something else, that since the board has complete discretion as to how to determine those expenditures, the board can also determine that there might be a open ballot, so that the town can affirm that that is exactly what the town would like those monies spent on.
You want to address that, Art?
Yes, Carl, you're right. There has been committees formed. Have you had any meetings?
We've had one.
We've had one meeting. There is talk about hiring a specialist who would help us draw up some concepts and all that sort of stuff. And until we have some more of that in place, but we certainly are going to have public meetings, there's no doubt that we would be spending that much money without public input, I can assure you, okay? But we're just getting started. It takes, it takes a long time and that sort of stuff to get everything going, okay?
And would you commit that the board will consider whether or not it should be put on a ballot, once that determination is made as to how the board would like to proceed to get the town to affirm it?
I think it's something that should be considered. I don't know if it's, if it's allowed, if something like that, would that be allowed by the state or?
I think when the time comes, we should consider it from the board.
Yeah, yes, we certainly will consider it. There's, there's the, the problem is that possibly the state will, I would think it would allow us to do it, but that's the only thing, okay?
I only bring it up because according to what I could find, it says you have complete discretion.
That is true.
And that means complete discretion.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Hoffman, thank you so much for the report. I really appreciate it. Just a few points. I find reading numerical reports without commas a little complicated when we get into big numbers, so I would please ask that we have the columns all with the commas in all of them. Thank you. So $2 million, looks like $2 million, and not $200,000. Question, on the debt service, is 492 North Street supposed to be North Road? I don't know of a North Street in Shasbury.
That is no longer active anyway, but it should have been North Road probably type of issue.
Thank you. And then my other question is simply about the community appropriation of the Arlington Rescue Squad. In fiscal year '24, there is $0 appropriated, and I wondered if we are having a different arrangement for our emergency services.
Two or three years ago, we took the Bennington Rescue Squad off from community appropriations and put it as a line item on the budget. We felt that if for some reason the public turned it down, we could not be without emergency service from Bennington, okay? We did the same thing this year with Arlington. Arlington Rescue Squad is a line item on the budget that we will be voting on, okay? It is not under community appropriations, the fact that we feel we have to have, it's a service that we have to provide for you, okay? And every year, we negotiate with Bennington and Arlington over the amount. We work it out with them, okay?
Anybody online? Hands raised? Jim? Yes?
When my wife and I bought a new car about five years ago...
Can you come closer?
My wife and I bought a new car about five years ago. There were basic things about the price of the car that had to be there, like the wheels, the motor, everything, bottom line. And then came all the little fancy things. I wanted a sunroof. My wife wanted heated seats. And every time you want something, the base price goes up a little bit, okay? Looking at the ARPA money, it seems to me that the most, that there should be some kind of priority list, and within the priority list, there'll be a priority list. So it seems to me that Cole Hall, ABA, bringing it up to date, should be the first priority. And what's included there, I don't know whether it's an elevator, ramps, or special bathrooms, bars, whatever, but that should be basically estimated, planned, and then you take 1.1 million and you deduct what you've got to do with Cole Hall to make that safe and accessible. Then we're left with some money that's left over. And I think the idea of a community center... And I think the idea of a community center, I don't know what that means, but you know, looking at small towns that you drive through in Vermont or elsewhere, a nice green, park benches, beautiful trees, flower gardens, place where people can stroll, take their children. I don't know. I don't know what's involved in a town center. But I'm sure everybody's got an idea of what should be there. And but then we will know how much money we've got left to focus on that project. And I don't know, we'll see.
Sure.
And maybe there was another project that I missed that has priority over the meeting place, town meeting place.
Marthy, you want to address that?
Yeah. Thanks for that question. So we have just had our reorganizing meeting for the Economic Development Committee, which has not been in existence, I don't think, since 2006?
At least.
Maybe. And so we're coming back into range here. We are certainly taking the priority of making sure the Coal Hall and ABA accessible and then kind of we'll deduct that. What Art had mentioned was that we have or are going to try to bring on some kind of consultant to help us kind of figure out some of the priorities as well as having public meetings to talk with our community members. There were certainly some big priorities that are on the website. If you'd like to look at them again under our ARPA website. And we will be looking at those. And I think what the Economic Development Committee is really going to do once we've taken down the money from the Coal Hall improvements, which really must be done, we will take that remaining balance and use it as seed money to kind of match grants and other things. There's a lot of opportunities out there. We've designated our town center, and that allows us to work on a lot of different levels with a lot of different funding sources, as well as received a health equity grant that will also be able to help us with some of the technical assistance behind, how do we envision it? How do we include everybody in the conversation? So certainly it's to be coming. We're going to have our second meeting.
So be patient, Jim.
We'll make sure. I know, I'm all about communication, so we'll be there.
She mentioned the website. That's something that we oftentimes overlook. It's getting better and better and better, and there's a ton of information on it. Jennifer.
Is there a deadline for the ARPA funds to be spent before they go away?
December of 2026, the money has to be expended. December of 2025, the final plans that you're going to expend it on are due. If I could just say too, part of the ARPA funding is a force multiplier. Like looking at Coal Hall and just the initial looking at it, I expect to get at least 150,000 or more in matching grants. So you turn 400 into 5.5. You can merely get a lot of value for your buck by going to the grants that will match things you're doing.
So the final plan has to be in place by December 31st by 2025, and we have to have spent it by a year after that.
It has to be finished, all projects have to be done by 2026. So there's time to do things correctly.
To a degree. It's very difficult to find contractors going to bid and getting projects completed. We have a labor shortage, so I don't want us to think that that's a far-off deadline. It really is not. Okay.
We expect to have the RFP for Coal Hall out in a couple of months, maybe even a month. Now that town meeting and all this is over, it gives them more time. And the Economic Development Committee is underway, and we have an RFP ready to go out for the consultant for that also.
Thank you.
Anybody online? Some more comments, questions, concerns? Alice? Go easy on that fuck.
What is happening with the Shasbury Medical Center? The Pharisees ran that center for years and treated so many people in need. I'd like to know where those people are going to be able to go now if this shuts down. It's a beautiful sentence, you put that all together. Why isn't the hospital, I mean, are we working with the hospital to see if they would put a doctor in there?
I mean, I guess. I do want to do.
Are you doing anything with that?
So there is anything happening, but the hospital was consulted before it closed.
Okay, all right. At this point in time, it remains an open question. The hospital was involved initially before it closed and no action taken there. But it is something that the Select Board's aware of, and it remains an open question. Comments, questions, concerns? Anybody online? Are you ready to vote? Motion on the floor. Shall the town authorize collection of taxes? Wait, back up, no, strike that, never mind. I don't have any numbers here, so I got a lot of pen marks. to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2024? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, so ordered. There's a. When Art was giving his report, he wanted to address the ballot articles tomorrow because some of them have, you know, they're, it's involved in what the Select Board's doing and everything. I broke those off and told him, no, you can't do it. The compromise was that I told him I'd give him a few minutes to talk about it after we did the budget. Want to talk about those?
Yep. Okay. Tomorrow, Australian ballot, there's going to be, other than the people that we want to vote for and so on and so forth, there's going to be seven different articles and maybe other ones. The first one needs a little bit of explanation. I talked to you about changing the water department or changing the piping of the water system. We have an estimate by an engineer on what it's going to cost to do the first phase. It's estimated it's going to be $1,780,000. Obviously, we don't have that kind of money, so we're going to have to borrow it. The bonding company wants the good faith of the citizens of Shasbury and the equity of the town to guarantee that ballot or guarantee that bond. You do not have to pay the bond back. It is going to be paid by the users of the water. That's important. You have to guarantee it. That's the way the bond system works. They want somebody to say, yep, we're going to pay for it. But you, you as taxpayers will not, unless you're using water, you will be the ones paying it back over a 20-year loan and all that sort of stuff, okay? Any questions on that? Articles two through six have to do with zoning. I've got Chris Williams here that can answer any questions if I'm not saying it right. I just agreed, I'm just kind of paraphrasing him if you have any other questions, but it's all written out on page, we just went over it, we're on 18. We're now going to page 19. The very first one is accessory dwellings. They're addressing the fact that a lot of people are taking a garage and converting it to a living center for a relative or an Airbnb house. This just recognizes that it can be done. They've changed some square footage requirements and so on and so forth. But article number two is just clarifying and understanding that we can have accessory dwellings on your home property. If anybody has any questions, Chris will be glad to answer it, but that's my interpretation. The next one has to do with, we now recognize tiny homes. Before this, we didn't know where tiny homes fit in. We really didn't think they were a mobile home. We really knew that they weren't a house. So now this recognizes tiny homes, and of course, they have to comply with all the regulations that we put forth. The next one I am going to read. Number four. No new public or member limited facility, the purpose of which is the promoting of or the discharge of munitions is permitted in the town of Shasbury. This does not affect Hale Mountain. What this is trying to address is what happened in Pollet, which we now refer to as Slate Valley up there. And I think that the state is also working on some legislation along this line. Does not affect Hale Mountain at all. Number five has to do with when somebody appears before the DRB. Now, if you just build a garage out in back and you give this zoning administrator your setbacks and all that sort of stuff, it does not go before the DRB. But when there's a major project, it goes before the Development Review Board. They do findings, they come up with stipulations and that sort of stuff. The project gets started and there's a slight change. Before this, we had to go back to the DRB for any changes. What they've tried to do is to give the zoning administrator some flexibility so that she can, or it's not always, Shelley is the one now, I'm sorry. But that person can make, approve slight changes. It's very specific on what she can and what she cannot do. And what is important is that budding neighbors, budding property owners will be notified if there's any changes. So it just is going to expedite some of the things that, just to drag on and on forever, going back for DRB meetings, okay? And the last one on zoning is number six. And this requires open space design in a subdivision. I think it was, the language before was a little bit gray. It didn't say that they had to. But now we're saying that they must use, they put in the word must. The Development Review Board must require developers to implicate an open space design, so on and so forth, okay? Any questions, concerns?
God, Hoffman.
I don't have my glasses, and I haven't really had a chance to read through this stuff. What is the open space requirement?
Chris.
This goes above and beyond like two-acre law, five-acre law, zoning by acre. There's now an additional stipulation on how much room you need to put a house on a development?
Ask Chris Williams. Chris, could you come up and address that? My initial question on that, when I read it, I thought, oh, this is awfully broad and everything, but I was informed it and then went back and looked. That bylaw is only going to be triggered if you're in there on a subdivision, right?
Right. This is not somebody building a house on an old cow pasture. This is multiple buildings that are clustered together to preserve open space. So we saw an example of this, and there's only one in town. It's the Lake Perrin Village Development over there on the edge of North Bennington, Affordable Housing, thing the Shires Housing Bill. I think the results were pretty successful myself. This is just, this is an attempt to further limit impacts of development. In other words, to try and preserve more natural Vermont in the face of increased development. And so these are the conditions under which that open space development provision, which is, I don't know, three, four pages in the subdivision regulations, if you want to read it. This will kick in the provisions of open space subdivision.
So if, could I, if, so if I'm doing a subdivision and I'm knocking my field into pieces, I have to go for the DRB and so on and so forth. And if my field can be seen from the road and I'm going to change the hillside or such, then that's going to trigger the requirement of the three or four or five pages of open space. But if I already own that acreage and alls I'm doing is I'm going to build a house on it that you can see from the road, then I don't have any, that doesn't trigger that open space?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. I hope that's satisfactory explanation.
So it does change the limits. Like if I'm doing a subdivision and I've got 20 acres and it's in a one-acre subdivisible zone where I could subdivide that into 20 lots, I can no longer do that because of this possibly kicking in?
No, not necessarily. I don't want, I want to give you a clear answer and not hedge. You know, I mean, this talks about the conditions that trigger open space subdivision design. If you aren't in those categories, then it doesn't apply. If you want to build one house on a piece of land, this doesn't apply. It's like if I want to build 20, not 20 acres. Yes, it does, right. And you can see that, you can roll over.
Chris, Chris, could you come up to the, the folks that are online? I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry here. It's too easy to talk across the aisle. What I'm saying is, is that, you know, this lays out how many, six different situations that will trigger open space subdivision design. If you're not one of those, it doesn't apply to you.
Jennifer?
As people who have been trying to create a subdivision in the town of Shasbury to add more housing for people who want to live here and have an affordable place to live in a beautiful part of the world, this concerns me. All of the Act 250 hoops and hurdles have been impossible to overcome. So we've been looking at a piece of land for two years that we've not been able to move forward on. And so adding further restrictions just deeply concerns me. And I would hope that everybody would really consider all the hoops and hurdles that already exist in Vermont that are restricting our potential development and creating housing, which we all need. A lot of our housing stock is very old and it's two-story, and a lot of us need one-floor living, and that's what we're trying to create. So I would really hate to see something that would further prohibit development of not affordable housing, but housing that is affordable for all. Thank you.
Other questions, other comments, concerns? Yeah, it's not, I was wondering, I guess this is for Chris. Can you, we've had open subdivision laws on the books for a while. So I guess my question is, can you? So I guess my question is, can you clarify a bit what has changed here? It's not like this is a whole new set of rules that say you have to build an open design. We've had that for a while, so my question is, how is this different from what's on
The answer is, is less voluntary than the present situation. In other words, the DRB is not required to institute the principles of open space subdivision, but the first sentence of this says the Development Review Board must require developers. So it, it changes from, you can do it or not, and we haven't seen a lot of this open space subdivision design. But now we're saying, well, in these seven conditions, you must.
So we're, we're talking about open space. So just as clarification, so in our zoning bylaws, under the subdivision part, there's a section on opens that defines and describes open space development. The two or three or four pages. So we probably need to read that to really see what, what the effect would have if it was going to affect the size of lots, number of lots and that sort of thing. Is that right?
Well, to explain it as simply as possible, I would say that the principle is that you cluster your buildings in an area to preserve open space so that this is open space that's held in common to the homeowners association and that, it creates density. In other words, put your buildings all in a cul-de-sac or some circular road and, and leave as much of the space open as possible. You could see a really successful application of this at Lake Perrin Village.
Kenny? Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone.
I'd like to know how this fits with 80 flat acres of solar hurdles.
We're not there yet. We're not there yet. That's next. Questions or concerns? Anybody online? You got somebody? Not, okay. Okay, any other comments about any of that? All right, our last article, final article. Ken gave it away. I was kind of trying to keep it.
Can we do community appropriations first?
All right, okay, yeah. You want to address, yeah. Need to touch on community appropriations because there's always a question that comes
And on page 21 over to page 22, are community appropriations to be determined. Years ago, if a group or a club wanted some money, they usually came to the town meeting, stood up, gave a speech on what they, why they thought they should be, they should be placed on the ballot, so on, so forth. That was a long time ago. Now it's gotten to the point where we have a list of people that did it last year. They send the town administrator a request. He has a deadline set. They say this is what we'd like to put on the ballot for this coming year. We have struggled with how we can control it, if that's the right word, and we've got to do it, come to grips with it, but there are, it's a big number. And it's a big percentage of budget. I can't remember what percentage was it, 3%? It's over 3% of our budget. There are, like I said, there are some big numbers here, some of them may be very worthwhile and that sort of stuff. What I want you to understand is that because it's here does not mean that the select board says it's a good thing or anything. We are just putting on what people have sent in, okay? If you want, this number that this adds up to was part of the budget that you voted on. If you don't think that something is necessary, vote no. It may reduce your taxes if another people feel the same way as you do, okay? But I think there are some people in the audience that may want to talk about their appropriation or their, what they've sent in.
Sarah Wilson. There was a time when we wouldn't allow anything to be voted, we used to vote on the floor, and you couldn't have a vote on the floor. You were going to be out unless you sent somebody to talk to us about what it was. All got moved over to the, to the Australian ballot. We still tried to kind of do that, but it kind of fell by the wayside. Those who want to speak on it are allowed to. Sarah.
Thank you very much. My name is Sarah Wilson. I'm a resident of Shasbury, and I'm here to speak for the Bennington Free Clinic tonight. We are question three on the community appropriations section of the ballot. First of all, the Bennington Free Clinic wants to thank the town of Shasbury and its members for voting for our community appropriations last year. We are asking for $1,000 this year. As many of you know, the Bennington Free Clinic is located in Bennington, however, does serve North Bennington and Shasbury residents, and as of last year, served 11 North Bennington and three Shasbury residents. This year, we are under the direction of David King, and we have 12 volunteer doctors, nine nurses, and one physician's assistant. So thank you very much, Shasbury, and we would ask for your vote again this year.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Is there anybody else to speak on any of the appropriations?
Way in the back.
Hi, my name is Kurt Merrill. I work with Bennington County Habitat for Humanity, and I just wanted to thank the town for their past support. And I just wanted to say that as of November of 2022, we've built 32 houses in Bennington County. We serve people earning between 30 and 80% of the median income. Two of the houses we have built are in the town of Shasbury, and we have also completed several home repair projects for residents in Shasbury, most of which are handicap ramps to allow people to safely enter and exit their homes. And I, let's see, and I want anybody to contact Habitat about any available land for purchase. We're always looking for land to build new homes. Also, we're open to people to volunteer to work with Habitat, to swing a hammer or whatever you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. I saw a hand in the, yes. Want to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Toomeyer. I am the fiscal manager at Sunrise Family Resource Center in Bennington, and for the past six years that I've been there, Shasbury folks have allocated us $1,000 a year, which is less than 1% of your total community appropriations, or just over 1% if my math is correct. But we do a lot of that and are deeply, deeply grateful. We have provided support services to families in Bennington County since like 53 years. And, and that $1,000 helps us provide resources and referrals to medical needs. We have a pantry to help with food insecurity. We have family support workers who come in and work with families, providing parent education opportunities. Last year alone, we served over 4,500 children in Bennington County. So thank you for, for all of that support. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else to speak on any of the appropriations? One more.
I'm Alan Baker. I have a show on WPTN called Politics of Food on Thursday. It's a live call-in show for gardening questions, ag issues, and anyone who wants to do a show can come do it. There's no one there is paid. Everyone's volunteering. So if you have any passion about anything, you want your own soapbox, come on down, we'll give you a slot anytime. So promoting a radio station, there's a, looking for more and more people with enthusiasm and to move it all forward. I'd love to have someone during a pandemic that wanted to broadcast NBA games on the radio since no one could go to them, but I'm not a technical person, I don't know how to make that work other than me sitting in the station on a cell phone from somebody plugging into the system. So it's, it's a community service, and if you have a passion for anything, come on down and I hope you vote for the appropriation. Thanks.
I think that's 24, which is Shire's Media Partnership that we all know as WPTN. Yes, sir.
Can I back him up on that?
By certainly.
I didn't know who's watching people's TV.
Very briefly, please.
Yes, I'm Mike Willie. WPTN is struggling. They have been struggling for years. I think they've probably been 10 years since everybody that worked there gave up collecting any wage tax. I don't know how many businesses in any of these towns around that could say that, that actually kept it going for at least 10 years. In that time, they've gone with FM channel, and they've upgraded a lot of the equipment, and we appreciate the help that we could get. Oh, incidentally, he said anybody that had a show that they were interested in. It's got to be something legal.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay. The last article we have is, Oops, I'm sorry.
Well, hello, folks. I'm Jenny Rosicky. I'm the director over at the John G. McCullough Free Library in North Bennington, and...
Hi, everyone. I'm Shazella Gayetts, the Youth Services Librarian at the John G. McCullough Free Library in North Bennington and a resident of Shasbury.
And we're, hello. I'm just, it came to my attention this evening that the 2021, the 2021 report was in your guide, your town report. So if you're interested in the 2022 report, please stop by the library and I'll make sure that that's available as well. Can we do that over at Cole Hall tomorrow?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so if you'd like that update. But I am extremely pleased to announce that the library reopened in, on December 1st of 2022 after extensive renovations, accessibility upgrades, and safety, fire safety, plumbing, let's say, HVAC system, and a brand-new meeting space. So for you and five others, it's a reservable space to come and use. It's also available as like a laptop bar. So use our high-speed Wi-Fi, borrow a laptop, bring your own, and enjoy this new space. And I'd also like to say that it is and continues to be an honor and a pleasure to serve our neighbors in Shasbury. So thank you so much for your support.
And please stay tuned. We have a very, very full summer reading program coming up in 2023. If you have children or grandchildren, be ready to bring them. We're excited. The theme this year is "All Together Now."
Thank you.
So stay tuned, folks. Exciting things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online? Okay. Last article that we have is to transact any other non-binding business as legally may come before said meeting at this time. So we're on that article. Let's see. Any action that we take is non-binding. It'd be advisory only. I suspect that the bulk of our crowd is primarily solar-concerned citizens. Not that many people stay this long, although it's not that late. I was contacted about an advisory, the advisory motion protocol, what would need to happen and so on and so forth. The, a lot, a lot of you are familiar with, there was a meeting with the, was it Planning Commission? Planning Commission, and that was a, a public meeting, and there was no motion on the floor or anything like that. Given the format of the meeting that we're in now, if it is possible or amenable, I would prefer a motion as far as if you, if, if there's certain members of the group that have indicated there might be, if we had that motion a second and then we open it up to everybody talking, or we can simply launch into folks talking. I will put a limit, I have a timekeeper, I will put a limit, three minutes. Once everybody's had their say, you can come back on, say more.
Dr. August. Hi, I'm Michael August. I've lived on Holy Smoke Road for 30 years. I'd like to make a motion. As presented by Freepoint Solar, we, the people of Shasbury, do not support the Shasbury Solar Project. As public servants to the Town of Shasbury, the Select Board, and the Planning Commission, we ask each to exercise their right to file as interveners in the PUC process and support an expert witness to testify on behalf of the community's best interests regarding economic and environmental concerns and the long-term health of our community.
Okay, so you're making a motion that you're requesting that the Select Board...
First that we...
File as interveners?
Well, no, first is the Town of Shasbury, or the people of Shasbury, do not support Shasbury Solar, the Shasbury Solar Project.
Okay, that, that, that isn't in the form of an actionable motion. It doesn't ask for some kind of action or propose some kind of action to be taken. It's a statement that, it's a, it's a preamble or a statement that can lead up to the motion, but the actual motion would be requesting some kind of, or proposing some kind of an action. And that's when, I think you got to the part where you said you were asking the Select Board to file as an intervener?
Mm-hmm.
Could you read that for me again? Ask?
As public servants of the Town of Shasbury, the Select Board, and the Planning Commission, we ask each to exercise their right to file as interveners in the PUC process and support an expert witness to testify on behalf of the community's best interests regarding economic and environmental concerns and the long-term health of our community.
So you would be asking the Select Board and Planning Commission to take steps to file as interveners and... And I guess have...
In opposition, obviously.
Excellent. The, what I'm trying to avoid is the opposition piece. We have to be very careful of. Robert's Rules doesn't allow negative motions. This is kind of a, in a gray area. We can ask that, we can make a motion that something... That a particular position be taken.
So should be, there should be two motions, one that we do not support, the plan as presented by Freeport. And that would be one motion, and then the next motion would be the...
Okay. So, so... I don't know how to get it into a shall format. Tim?
Yeah, just as a point of order, aren't we in a section of the agenda that calls for non-binding business?
Yes.
So I don't believe it would be in order to find a Select Board to do a forceback.
It wouldn't be. What this is, it would be a formal statement, an advisory statement that everybody's going to vote on, the people that are here. We can, formatting, we can have a, essentially another hearing. It will repeat much of what has been said at the Planning Commission hearing, public hearing, Select Board hearing last Thursday. But those were public forums where there was, no action came out of them. The Select Board are left to take from that what they think the mood was. A motion states formally what the preference is, mood sounds the right word, but what the preference would be. So if we, if you started out with stating that...
As presented by Freeport Solar, we, the people of Shrewsbury, do not support the Shrewsbury Solar Project.
Lon, can you help me, please?
Just a point of order, which is, I think he's asking the Select Board and the Planning Commission, which I think are two entities that can have parties' status before the PUC, to represent the town's interests. What's going to happen is, I imagine, one or two people in this crowd is going to stand up and express what their point of view is on it. And I think the Planning Commission and the Select Board will get the tenor of the town's either support or dissatisfaction with the plan. And that will speak for itself. We really don't need a non-actional motion. We just need a motion that says they want them to do. Does that get in front of the PUC? And then what happens to this meeting will inform us to what they should be supporting or not supporting.
So I can proceed without a motion? It sounds like it'd be easier if I opened the floor?
No, he can just do the motion. But just asking the action is to have the Board and the Planning Commission each intervene. Then his next point is, we don't support it. We're going to have a public hearing where all these people are going to speak, and the people who will be intervening will understand which side they should be taking this question. So I think the only motion he needs is that the Planning Commission and the Select Board intervene on behalf of the people of Shrewsbury. That's it. Vote on that motion. But during the discussion, we're going to know what the sentiment of the town is as all these people speak about their support or non-support for the proposal. And that will enforce the Planning Commission, the Select Board, what to do, what to do there.
So Lon, we've been to many meetings. Most of us were in opposition. And we've heard from the Planning and, and the Select Board that they don't know the sense of the town.
And I think this attendance is about to a point of, like, the sense of the town is...
And what's to, what's to say that they then go to the PUC?
This is a...
Sound binding?
No, it's not binding.
It's advisory.
I don't believe anyone online can hear a word that's being spoken without being directly into the microphone. My apologies for interrupting.
Yep, I'm sorry. Thank you. What's to move the members of the Planning Board and the Select Board? I know it's non-binding, but what's to move them to understand that they represent us? Hey, can I, I want to clarify for everybody. Lon has informally, he agreed to be my parliamentarian to help situations like this with what would be an appropriate procedure under Robert's Rules. That's why I've asked him to be here.
So...
Can you get closer to the mic, Lon, please? Thank you.
Yes. So I think the motion, asking them to act, is all that's needed. I think it's so well-attended, this meeting, and the number of people who are going to speak for or against is the persuasive power to get them to do something. And, and it's not going to be the non-binding motion that we don't like it that's going to help them. It's going to be how strong and unanimous the voice of the community is for or against that's going to persuade them that it's an important issue to take up.
So how about to the PUC?
That's where, that's what you're persuading them to do by your presence and your request that they intervene, both the Select Board and the Planning Commission. Whether they do or not in a non-binding forum, it's still their, their choice. But this is what's available to us tonight.
So just looking down the road, when a number of us will be participating in the PUC, would it be helpful for us to say the town voted 60% in opposition?
Everyone is free to appear before a public body and say what happened here tonight.
Okay. Kenny. Carl, I'll get you in a second. Ken?
I'm just, I'm school graduate. I'm not a lawyer. But my question would be, up or down, either do you want this project or don't you? It's yes or no. I think it's that simple to me. We'd ask this body, do you want this project? I would make a motion that we get an up and down vote on that project. And then I would ask the Select Board and the Planning Commission to follow that vote.
Okay, so motion's been made. Yep.
His motion was made before that by Dr. August, and no request for a second was made.
I'm not sure what his motion was. And that's what I was trying to get to, was so I could state what, what it was. And this is my shortcoming.
His motion was to have the Select Board and the Planning Commission take action by intervening. And then I think...
Okay, shall the...
Part of his statement was very clear.
Shall the Select Board and the Planning Commission be advised to intervene, as in to intervene as interested parties or statutory parties on behalf of the town?
All right. So my first, we were splitting it into two motions. The first motion that we talked about, and it's not any different than what Ken was just saying, is, I've got to put my glasses back on. He said it more directly than me. And what I said is, as presented by Freeport Solar, we, the people of Shrewsbury, do not support the Shrewsbury Solar Project. So that's, that's the same motion.
How about if we do this? How about if we take a motion, take two motions? First one being, shall the Select Board and the Planning Commission be advised to intervene in their statutory party status on behalf of the town in the solar project? Period. So what you're doing is you're saying, you're directing that, yeah, we want you to intervene. We don't want you to step back and, and be passive. Okay? That's the first part.
Okay. Do we have a second?
And then do we have a second? Got a lot of seconds. You want to discuss it?
I, I wonder if, is it this one project that you're in?
No, this, this is...
Can you come up here, Mike?
Come on, Mike. Come up to the light, microphone. This piece, this little piece right here is to take care of advising, directing as much as you can, that the Select Board and the Planning Commission be active in the, in the hearing process and the permitting.
Of what?
Of the...
Okay, you just said that, the Freeport.
That's a big one.
That's the big one. But if we vote this down tonight, or whatever we do, by tomorrow they can change the name. Corporations do it all the time. And they'll be back in there.
Well...
But it reads, as presented by Freeport. Okay, that's all that we, that's all that anyone has seen. And we haven't seen the hot...
Yeah, it, that, the, this is advisory only, and it's generically about, it's generically about this solar project that's being presented. If they change the name, they don't automatically get a buy on anything. The advisory opinion has still been delivered to the Select Board and Planning Commission.
Okay. Tom, just a point of order. The town voted to have this on Zoom, so when people speak, they have to come up to the microphone. It's not fair to the people at home. They can't hear if they don't come to the microphone.
Okay. Carl?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with what is presently before the panel, the town, for a vote. But I do have a problem with a motion that relates to we, the people of Shrewsbury. Because this meeting is not specifically for this project, and that the people of Shrewsbury that are here were not here for that purpose. So it's just those people that are here that are going to vote. So if you want to have a vote for that part, I suggest it not be identified as we, the people of Shrewsbury.
And it isn't being, let me, let me state. The motion is, shall the Select Board and Planning Commission be advised to intervene in the solar project in their, as they are legally allowed to, party status and such? It, it isn't the statement, we, the people. This is just indicating, yeah, you want to make sure that they intervene. The next motion I'm going to ask for is going to be, okay, the up or the down, as Kenny was saying. What do you want them, what kind of a posture would you advise them to take? So let's vote on advising the Select Board and the Planning Commission to intervene in the permitting process for the solar, this solar project, the big solar project.
On Holy Smoke Road.
On Holy Smoke Road. All in favor of advising Select Board and Planning Commission to do that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Now some kind of a motion to advise the Select Board what kind of posture, the Select Board and Planning Commission, what kind of posture you would like them to take. Kenny, you want to take a stab at that? And then we're going to open it up for comments.
I feel that the Select Board and Planning Commission should take a negative posture to the project, as presented. We don't even know what it is yet. And I've been at this touch in my entire life. I had a bunch, they could make that print that they put out in Chinese, and I could understand it just as well. I don't think there's a person in this room is against solar. But is that Mount Strossi what it is right now? I would, I mean, you're saying you want open, one board that's here on open areas, and you're going to let 85 members of solar panels in. Isn't that a little illogical?
How about if, let's start talking about it and see what kind of a motion comes forward, comes up. And I'm not sure it's that critical that, that we have a motion, so to speak. They've, the motion that they made to advise that they participate, that they intervene, not sit back. Now they're going to hear what the posture of the voting public is. Yes. Yes.
So I'm Corinne Levin. I just want to know if we can do, like, an informal motion right now for a show of hands for people who are for it and for people who are against it. Just a show of hands.
Well, that would be up to the group, the congregation. It'd be a two-thirds majority to say, yeah, that you want to take a vote and inform. It's, this whole thing is informed because it's non-binding advisory. So you've heard that proposal's been made to do a show of hands right now for and against.
We have a number of...
Anybody want to object?
I want to object.
We have a number of people who want to talk about the plan, Shrewsbury Solar Plan currently. So you want to do that before there's any kind of up or down? Okay. Young lady in the back, yes?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kriya Baki. I think we should look at data and reports before we ask the Select Board and the Planning Commission to have a negative. We should ask questions, absolutely. I work in marketing. It's all about data. You optimize from data. I don't know that it makes sense to ask to, uh, take a stance and have an opinion without looking at facts, without looking at data. Personally, as a citizen and as a marketer, if I did that, I'd be out of a job. So I think we should look at the facts before we ask the Planning Commission and the Select Board to vote against. And I'm saying that not as, I'll be done in a second. I'm telling...
No, no, you're, no, you're fine. Keep going. Yeah.
I'm not saying that as I'm for or against the project. I'm saying collectively, I want to make an educated decision.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can't hear anything on Zoom. The wrong microphone's getting spoke into.
Just lift it, lift it up.
Tip it up.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. I didn't want... Sorry, Mom.
And then just come close.
And yeah. Yeah, I just, I don't know how much was not hurt, which I've never heard someone say to me, they can't cure me with a lot of mouth. So my apologies. But yeah, if we could just see studies, I know there's studies coming out from the companies, the solar companies, and the planning, excuse me, the Public Utilities Commission is going to look at all that information. I just really feel that the facts and the studies and the information that we looked at before, we can say what we say. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay. So, so the Planning Commission and the Select Board know that they've been advised to make sure that they do intervene as statutory parties. Let's now talk about what we're going to tell them, what you're going to tell them you want to have happen. Karen?
I had a, I can do it here. Karen Mellinger, Shrewsbury. I'm wondering, has the Select Board received the letter that the engineering firm that works for the company sent to V-Trans about the curb cut and the alternative routes? There's been some discussion at some of the forums about using local roads. And there's been a lot of conversation about Holy Smoke, obviously, and that they are hoping for a curb cut off of Seven, but they would also be using alternative local roads. And I don't know whether or not you have seen the letter that went from the engineers, and that is fact. And I do have copies for everybody here. Have you received that to discuss? There's a map of their alternative roads. And coming from the north, they would be coming off of Seven. These are, if they don't get the curb cut, and even if they do, these are the two alternatives, from the north and the south. They would be coming off of New Seven onto 313 in Arlington, coming onto Warmbrook Road... They would be coming off of New Seven, onto 313 in Arlington, coming onto Warmbrook Road. I don't know if everybody knows those little road systems or not, out in the Boonies on our east side, but they're not very big roads, and they're very windy, and they're pretty bad. In any case, they would come up Maple Hill Road then, where it connects to East Road, and come down to Holy Smoke. The southern route, local roads, would be coming up 7A, right through the center of town, turning onto Buck Hill Road, and coming up Buck Hill to East Road. So they'd be coming past the elementary school, town hall, all of that. And we're talking, I, I mean, it's all in here, and this is from the engineer from the company to V-Trans. They are asking them for the curb cut, because they're saying this is going to be difficult, but we believe it's manageable on these local roads. If you read the extent of traffic, we're talking about them busing in workers from out of town, this is not local folks, it's, it's pretty incredible. They're talking at least 50 to 30 large equipment trucks per day. This is a six-to-nine-month process, going from spring through fall, and it's all right in here. And I'm, I've made copies for the Select Board, and this was obtained through a Freedom of Information request. Thank you, Karen, I appreciate it.
She just said it was obtained through a Freedom of Information request.
To Vermont Transportation. And, you know, I think that the concern for the people that have.
Karen?
The, the folks that had organized.
Time.
Oh, I'm sorry. The concern is not solar itself, the concern is the extent of this process. And we are asking the Select Board to please look at the facts that are out there at this point and say, wait a minute, is this, as this is being presented, not how it might be changed, how it's been presented, is this something that Shasbury can, can accept? Is this really in the best interest of Shasbury?
Great, thank you. Time's up.
At the Select Board meeting the other night, we were talking about, you know, how we thought the Select Board should go on behalf of the town, not in support of the project that was presented to us so far. We don't have all the details, you're right, we have some of the details, thank you, Mrs. Mellinger, for sharing that information with us. We said that we haven't heard from the town, so how can we, you know, just listen to the few people that were in the Select Board meeting? Tonight, we have a good representation of the town here. So I agree with Ken in a sense that I think we should get a feel for the people that are in this room and how they feel about the project that has been presented to us so far. Number six, open space subdivision. If you look at one, two, three, five, and six, I know this is a solar field with four substations, roads, kind of sounds like a subdivision to me. So if this is adopted, how do we allow this solar array in here, four substations, all these roads? And what anybody, I, I don't care what anybody says, this will change not only the face of Holy Smoke, it will change the face of Shasbury. That's all.
Next?
Michael. Just want to say a few words about Holy Smoke Road. Many of you live on the dirt roads, gravel roads of Vermont, Holy Smoke is one of them. It's, it's a beautiful road, aesthetics do matter to the PUC, so I'll just give you a little bit about the aesthetics. You go up Holy Smoke Road, it's, it's a beautiful road, it's a canopy road, it's very, it's very narrow towards the top, two cars can't really go by. And, and again, like a lot of the other roads, you got to know by living there where you can stop to let the other guy go by. There's a hairpin turn as you go up the road, you can't see what's on the other side, two cars can't fit past on the, on the hairpin turn. You go up past there, you got these beautiful fields on the left and the right, on the right, there's a really beautiful field, that's where 85 acres of solar panels are going to be. That's, that's, like you said, that's going to change what we know as Holy Smoke Road and that, and that part of town. The other part of that is, in my mind, is safety. I know, I know they say they want to have this curb cut, but I don't believe that they're not going to use the lower part of Holy Smoke. I know that's, that's what you guys want, but what's to prevent a truck from going down? And if I'm going up and it's going down, who's going to win there? Same thing with walkers or bicyclers. And then the road itself, it's, it's a beautiful road, but it's, it's a gravel dirt road, and it, it's fragile. The town crew does a great job keeping, keeping it open, keeping the snow plowed, when it's big rain, they fix it. I'm real, I'm concerned about the runoff when it rains. To me, it's, it's not a good situation. Thank you.
In the back, yes, sir. Want to come on up, please?
My name is Bleeker Wheeler, I live in Shasbury, and I did speak here about a month and a half ago when we last had a large meeting. So if any of this seems redundant, I apologize, I have tried to rephrase what I said before. So here goes. I would like to start by asking everyone in the room to consider some very basic ideas for a moment. Regardless of your feelings about this project, regardless of how long you've lived in Shasbury, whether you're eighth generation or you moved here during the pandemic, and even regardless of your political affiliation, I think we would all agree that we share something in common. This is our home, and we care about it. Not only that, we also care about each other. One of my favorite things about living here is the warmness with which we greet each other on a daily basis. I may not know you, but in Shasbury, I don't have to. If we pass each other, we're going to smile and say hello. If we come upon a vehicle stuck along the side of the road, we're going to stop and make sure that everyone is okay. And if a neighbor is sick or in need, we're going to offer our help. This isn't rocket science, it's common decency. It's simply who we are, and I hope that never changes. Now that I have you thinking in this regard, I would like to follow that up with a pretty rhetorical question. How lucky are we? Not everyone gets to live in an area where people are as courteous and thoughtful toward their fellow neighbors. Regardless of things like age, race, or politics, we respect one another. Following the golden rule, a firm handshake, or simply looking someone in the eye is second nature to us. And it is for all of these reasons that many of us are gravely concerned about Freepoint and their Shasbury solar project. What, if anything, have they done to earn our trust? As I mentioned at a previous meeting on January 5th, 2023, Reed Willis was quoted in the Bennington Banner saying, "We're here to begin a process of working with this community and state agencies in order to ensure the project we are proposing makes sense and is done the right way." Does anyone here actually feel that they have made good on those words? Let's address this for a moment by running down the list of opportunities they have had to walk their talk. When asked how willing they would be to reconsider the size or location of this project, did we get a direct response? No. Have they offered a site redesign? No. Have they addressed in writing any of the issues raised during the public comment period? Does anyone feel like they adequately addressed any of our concerns during our limited dialogues with them? Or like Reed Willis's claim, that they intend to use a minimal amount of herbicides, were their responses vague and elusive? Despite going into contract back in 2017, did they make any efforts at all to let us know what their intentions were? Does anyone here actually feel that the developer, by waiting until the last possible moment only to notify three landabutters and nobody else who could be affected, and doing this over the holidays, no less, has been at all honest and forthcoming?
Time. Thank you, thank you. Floor's open. Back, yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone, please.
Hello, Jesse DeCoole, Holy Smoke Road. I want to start by thanking Bleeker for speaking about the town and the community. I think that emotions are high, and it's very important that we stay civil and stay supportive of one another as we debate the pros and cons of this project. And so far from what I've seen, we've been able to do that, and I appreciate it. I respectfully disagree with what Ken said, we do have a very good idea of what they're proposing. In the 45-day advance notice letter, they made, laid out a map, we have a map of it at the back of the room, if you'd like to take a flyer home. The initial proposal did not take into account the North Bennington Water Line and Shasbury Water Line, I think it's the same line going across there, that property, they were, the map covers it right over. They did not take into account the Hall's deed restriction, going back on their generational land that they sold, with a deed restriction. They have cited the substations on top of peaks, right off Holy Smoke Road, and they tell us that this will be nearly invisible to residents. Where I live on Holy Smoke Road and Trumbill Hill Road, we will be staring at this for as long as it's there, I assure you, we will see it, and it will damage my business that I've set up on that, on that farmland, for people who come to see ecological restoration in action on our farm, which we're very proud of. And my well, our streams are below that land that we managed by an out-of-state billion-dollar corporation, and that concerns me mightily. And I just want to say, this is not just a nippy issue for me, I will always stand in defense of the natural world and my neighbors, and if this were being pitched for Shasbury Hollow, and their water was threatened, and their roads were threatened, and their home values were threatened, I would be standing here speaking here tonight. Thank you.
In the back again, yes?
We don't have any audio on Zoom. It's bad, it's bad, a bit tricky. And we just know how the people are going to feel.
Peter Bosco. I can appreciate that we need to keep emotions in check, but a hurt dog barks, and you poke someone in the eye, you're going to get a reaction. I oppose the solar project on Holy Smoke Road. This is not a farm, but an industrial-sized grotesque plant whose footprint is much larger than any conventional facility. Town officials were first made aware of a large solar project way back in 2017. That's nearly six years ago, yet nothing was done to blunt or stop it. Similar but smaller projects were proposed for the towns of Manchester and Bennington. Both plans were wisely rejected. Sorry, but Art Whitman and the Select Board have been totally impotent on this, and they let this slip through. We need to remove those town officials tomorrow who sat on their hands and allowed this to happen. We should poll every candidate for the Select Board to see where they stand. There are legal options here, including, believe it or not, getting the Sierra Club involved, as 30 acres of old growth forest is slated to be destroyed. What we really have here is a political agenda that has been attached to the issue of climate. It is politically expedient for ideological zealots and their solar fantasies. State officials are rushing this project through for hell or high water, even if it means the power generated may not even benefit the state, even if it means destroying property values or our bucolic way of life. There is no quid pro quo. Don't bet on projected tax revenue, that's another solar fantasy. Somebody asked about data, how 65 football fields with 80,000 panels, to start. Carl Jung once said, "People don't have ideas, ideas have people." It's easier for people to obediently follow a cause, to make themselves look virtuous, than take a broader, more reasoned view. We literally can't see the forests for the trees on this project, all in the name of profit for out-of-state speculators. And closing, to those town and state officials who blindly submit, you don't get to impose your utopian vision in the service of your narcissism on the poor, this project must die.
Alan Baker. We already get half of our electricity from out of state. Fortunately, they send it to us. All electricity produced in-state goes to the New England Independent Service Operators and comes back to the only state that's needed. So the, the view that it's going out of state is sort of a red herring, because you can't control electrons unless they go to the lines, they go where they're needed. Even quantum mechanics can't make you say electrons from this site, you don't go here. So the land, not here in Atlanta tonight, you heard the last meeting. All our diesel, gasoline, propane, natural gas comes around state. Our money goes out of state to those companies, big corporations, huge international corporations. I don't see anyone boycotting gasoline stations. All the refineries under law codes are brown and black neighborhoods. The Creteans are laying out their land back, they're laying out green electricity from high income back, but no one's complaining about that in state. Granted, this site is probably inappropriate. The reason they go out is the lands are sale, it's meant to high transmission lines, so they don't have to build more infrastructure. If they were to build it someplace else and didn't have the high transmission lines, people would be complaining about high transmission, they wouldn't be able to service a site. Most of these solar fields are built by people that have money, they want any money. Most of those people aren't in state. I've worked on a couple small ones up by Buck Hill and wherever it's laying, and they do bring in workers from all over the country because it's temporary work. They're in and out. It's not highly specialized, and you learn, I learned it, so like, if you can learn that, but it's, there isn't a, a ready workforce that can drop their work, go work for six months and then lay it off. So that's why a lot of the workers go from out of state. I think seeing trucks that come in for these facilities, you're going to tear up the road pretty good. Really good for 85 acres, yeah. But to landblast out of the Select Board is just inappropriate. I don't think that the company bought the land yet, I don't think they bought it. It's still for sale, folks on Holy Smoke Road, buy it, and the situation's done, it's over with. But it isn't for sale, the company, does the company own it yet? Yeah, well, if he gets enough pressure, they're not going, they're not going to, you can buy it and do whatever you want with it, make a major reserve.
He was asked, the owner was asked, and he said he was under contract.
But before, it's been for sale for quite some time, but my understanding is several companies looked at it ahead of time, or in the past, and you know, we took them up on it. I do agree with you, it's probably inappropriate for the road, for the, Holy Smoke Road is a terrible road. Okay, thanks.
Fine, thank you.
Can the person in charge of the audience please stop and adjust the microphone?
Can the person in charge of the audio please stop and adjust the microphone so the people on Zoom can hear? Thank you.
Is it something over here on?
I think they're just too far apart, but those things should be right next to each other.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I can only juice them up so much farther on my board. I'm hitting, I'm hitting peaks now, so honestly, it's people need to be speaking into the mics.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we literally can't hear the last, I don't know, seven or eight people. It's in and out very much.
Is this, would putting these posts together create any kind of feedback move?
I can turn it down, I'll, I can do is I'll turn down the volume on them speaking, and then we won't have that.
All right.
Go for it.
Thank you, let's try that. Yep, let's try that. Jennifer.
Can the folks on Zoom hear? Can you hear me now?
Yes, they can hear you.
Okay, thank you. After, Jennifer Hoffman, after everything that this community has been through with PFOA, it blows my mind that we would have a project that would be potentially contaminating our water system. The use of herbicides on this property directly over the North Bennington Line and affecting all of the other properties that are downhill from here, it just deeply concerns me. As I mentioned at the last Select Board meeting last week, my family in Bennington deeply affected by PFOA, we had 164 pico curies per liter reading. It's all throughout my blood. My father died from the cancer that he got. So it deeply concerns me that we're not prioritizing the drinking water and the rivers and the fish and all the children who play in our water in Lake Perrin. All of those water bodies are going to be affected by the use of herbicides in order to keep the grass down underneath these solar panels. So to me, that is the greatest concern of this entire project. Thank you.
My name's Ellen Rotorti. Can you hear me? I took a different aspect of the, not only the environmental, of course, we get our spring water from Hail Mountain, which has been a long time, but I took, I challenged people in this auditorium to Google Operation Car Wash and to Google Free Point Bribery Pro by the U.S. Justice Department and the Brazilian government and what was involved with, for a period of eight, nine years, that Free Point was giving bribery charges to Brazilian, to the Brazilian Petrobras. And it's very concerning to me, as one gentleman said, we need, we're a small community. We need to know who we can trust, you know, that is coming in. Are they just going to leave us high and dry when they come? Or are they just coming here for the opportunity to make money and sell it to out-of-town and decimate our 85 acres of land, 30 acres, 30 acres of forest? And I, you can Google, just go to Free Point Bribery Pro and find out for yourself. You know, it doesn't have to come from me. It was very easy for me to find this. They spent in one year, they spent over $500,000 in bribery to get an upper hand on the commodities that they were selling for oil. And if you don't believe me, Google it yourself. I don't trust them. I don't know, you know, somebody coming into our community. I trust my neighbors. I trust the people in this town. I trust these people here. I don't trust them. I don't trust what they're planning on doing. They're wanting to come down Maple Hill Road, or Maple Hill Road, if they can't get that curb off the new Route 7, and they're going to come down Trumbull Hill Road right past my house. If they go over to Holy Smoke Road, it's just going to, you can't even pass my house two cars. I have to, if somebody's coming down the hill, I have to move over before I can get into my driveway to even let them go by. There were, you know, who are we inviting into our community, is what I want to know? Are we going to, are we going to be left holding the bag? Are we going to be saying, boy, I'm really sorry, we didn't, you know, research them a little bit more and find out what they are all about? Are they going to be trustworthy? Are we going to be able to put our confidence in what they're going to be doing to our community? I don't think so. You have to ask yourself that.
Fine, thank you.
Jennifer Scoggins. I'm thinking I'm going to have a hard time making any kind of decision without having somebody from the PUC being here and educating all of us. I hear a lot of people saying that they don't trust the company, but I know nothing about it, and I don't know if you guys are looking into the allegations that are made by some of the people that are here tonight, but it's just, for me, it would be hard to say, I think you guys should go this way or this way, without hearing from the PUC or just some of the research that you guys have done. Thank you.
John Hoffman. I haven't really been involved in this a lot. I went to one meeting, the last one we had Thursday night, but I've listened, and I'm hearing a lot of people saying they don't have the facts on this yet to know which side of the road they want to go on as far as making a decision. And, and just listening at two meetings now, they're going to give them a curb cut off Route 7? Who gets that? I mean, that's crazy to me. They're going to give them a whole new exit off Route 7 to do this project. And if they don't get that, they're going to come up to East Road? That's a dirt road with huge trucks. I mean, I'm in construction. My trucks are small compared to the stuff that they're going to be rolling into this project. This is huge. Hold on. You're talking weight, massive weight compared to a school bus. This is going to completely change the neighborhood where this is going in. You're talking house values dropping. If they don't get that curb cut, we, you mentioned the other night that they might pay Holy Smoke Road so that it's a more usable road. It's a country dirt road. The water issue is huge. That's the third point I've heard. They're going to use herbicides to keep the grass down underneath these panels. What my wife talked about with the PFOAs, I mean, I don't even know how that's even being considered after what we've been through with the PFOAs and what it's done to this area. Just the plain, my fourth one that I've heard is just the plain size of this thing. It's 85 acres of solar panels, and I can't put in a subdivision? I can't subdivide lots to put houses up for people to live because of open air, open spaces, but we're willing to put 85 acres of panels up? The one thing I didn't hear mentioned tonight was the fire control issue. There's not even enough data out there yet on what happens when one of these solar panels catches on fire, and you've got 85 acres of them out there. How do we control that? And the sixth thing is, is just the benefit to our town. You know, what is the benefit to our town? I've heard $100,000 a year we're supposed to be getting and some sort of credit, but the power doesn't come here. So just a lot of points that I've heard in two meetings. Thank you.
Floor's open.
Chris. My name is Chris Williams. I'm on the Planning Commission. You can rest assured, the Planning Commission will intervene. We're only just gathering facts at this point. No formal application has been presented. There's a lot of hearsay out there. We're taking our time to gather solid information. We will intervene. But, you know, what I want to talk about is that in thinking about this, I see that the town is kind of going into crisis mode, that there's lots of anger, there's rural recrimination, and there's very, very strong opinions. And I'm reminded of other such periods where controversy kind of took over the town, and what comes to my mind is the TAM hearings. I was on the Planning Commission in those days. I must have been, I must have gone to a TAM hearing 15 times, and same people got up and said the same things, and in the end, people were dismayed that we didn't get to make the final decision, and that the state said, "If you don't produce any garbage, then you can oppose this project, but if you produce garbage, you're going to have to find a way to accommodate it." And you know what? With a lot of rancor and back and forth, we did accommodate it, and in the end, a lot of people, Shasberry didn't become the garbage center of Bennington County, which is what was argued in advance. In fact, lots of Shasberry people subscribed to their services, and they were providing something that was important to life in rural America, which was a way to get rid of your solid waste. Now, this project, again, this solar project, we don't have the final say on. The Public Utilities Commission is going to have the final say. It has a similarity to the TAM project, and if the state says, "If you don't use electricity, you can oppose this project, but if you use electricity, you're going to have to find a way to accommodate it." And so... Hold on there. I get my say. So, you know, I think that really the rhetoric is overblown. People should just take a deep breath. I'm not saying you shouldn't be in favor of it. I'm saying take a deep breath and calm down.
Have you spoken yet?
No, I haven't.
Come on up.
My name is Jared Jacobs. I can hear you, Jacobs. I live in Shasberry. Now, the picture you see with that little yellow square on all this land is only a piece of the pie. Who's to say they won't go for the whole damn thing? That's all I got to say.
Tim.
Tim Scoggins. I want to say that I have heard some things tonight that I didn't know and learned some things, and I agree that the scale of this project is concerning, but I have to come back to my initial reaction, and it's kind of a philosophical point, I guess, but the idea that this is solar power because we need it, we need to fight global warming, we need to do it on a big scale, on a big scale. When I was on the Select Board, I was at a Bennington County Regional Commission meeting. They were doing the study when it was first proposed by the legislature that would get to 90% renewables by the year 2030, and the first thing they had to look at was, is there in fact enough land that you can put solar panels on to do that? It was not immediately obvious. It turned out it was. There's plenty of land to do that, but the point of that being that the challenge of global warming, of climate change, is enormous, and we need to consider that it will take sacrifice to do something about it. And there may be times when we have to look at it. As we used to, we joked one time in the Select Board, we believe moving to renewable energy is so important, we're even willing to look at it. Now, as I say, I am being educated about the scale of this project, and I think there are things here that need to be looked at and concerned about, but I think we also need to keep in perspective that if we're going to do something about global warming, if we're going to get electric cars and do all of that, it's going to be a big deal, and it may impact us. So I'm hoping that everyone's initial reaction is not, yeah, I'm for doing something about solar as long as I don't have to see it. Keep in mind, in rural residential areas, agriculture is permitted. You can't stop anybody from doing agriculture. Somebody could put a pig farm, an 85-acre pig farm on Holy Smoke Road, and there's nothing we can do about it. Maybe, maybe solar panels wouldn't, wouldn't be bad in comparison to that. I'm just saying some perspective is required in that we, we need to think about the scale of the problem.
Some more hands. Floor's open. Yes.
Hi, my name's Mary Beatty. I live on Holy Smoke Road, and my concern with such a large scale of solar panels is how much electric magnetic radiation are those panels going to be emitting? How is that going to affect the health of everyone, let alone wildlife, the groundwater, toxic chemicals that are coming off from those solar panels? We all have wells. We all are going to have issues with chemicals and the radiation coming off from those panels. Thank you.
Back, yes.
Hi, my name's Nick Taylor, and one thing I just wanted to say, as I didn't hear a lot about tonight, is I grew up in Shasberry my whole life, and I used to hunt on Holy Smoke Road a long time ago. Richland owned that farm. Think about, a lot of these houses weren't even around when I was a kid. Think about how much we encroached on our habitats already. These deer are just getting pushed back further and further. Everything's suffering. Everything's going to suffer, and that's pretty much all I have to say. I just, like, think about the natural resources we have. It's our greatest asset. It's what generations of Vermonters grew up doing, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Floor's open. Yes, sir. Another brave soul.
My name is Tom Arnn. I live in Shasberry.
Can you move closer to the mic, sir?
I did analytical toxicology for over 30 years. The use of herbicides on this large of an area is going to affect the groundwater and the water tables. There is no way it will not just disappear with the halflife of the chemicals that they would use, because they will use the most cost-effective chemicals available to them, which would be 24D and glyphosate. And what I also think is that this, this corporation is probably not the right one for Shastberry. They don't sound good to me. I would like to see an 85 acre of solar today does not sound unreasonable once it's in without going up Holy Smoke Road and reimbursing neighbors. But as many people have said, this corporation does not sound like the right one. There, I would like to see a larger solar project in Shastberry because it is needed by the globe. But I think somebody else needs to do it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Austin Boddle. They say society is doomed when old men stop planting trees that they know they will never see the shade of. Take a look at what we put here in our front page. There's lots of trees already here. If we turn over and let our bellies open to the carnivores of Connecticut and they clear-cut all of our trees, our children will never be able to see the shade and the beauty that makes Vermont what it is. If you drive down our country roads, there's a reason they're one lane. There's a reason they're two lane, because that is what makes Vermont Vermont. Every time we sell off a small piece of ourselves to Connecticut here and set precedence by letting them build 80 acres here, hey, that just opens the door. Hey, they did it. Why can't we sell another 80 acres over in the hollow? Once we go down this road, we will never be able to go back. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for all this information. Floor's open. You don't have a pending motion.
They do. Is the motion a vote?
Uh, no, we didn't get that to that point.
I made a motion. The moment I offered out.
I expected it. And everyone can discuss it. Anybody who makes a motion? Point of order?
Yes.
There was, there is a motion on the floor. Oh, there is? There is, but the debate hasn't been closed. But, but there was a motion made that you asked to be made by Ken many speakers ago. And so whenever you close the meeting, then the advisory motion would be appropriate. To sum up, that motion was something along the lines of, "We, the people of Shastberry, Vermont, are advising the Select Board, the floor..."
No, no, hold on.
"...to dismiss." The motion was quite simple. Does this Assembly support or not support the proposed project?
By Ken? Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, question's been called. Is there a second for that?
There is a motion.
Okay, there's a second. That's a non-debatable motion, and what the effect is, is it would cease debate. It has to pass by two-thirds majority. All those in favor of ceasing debate and voting on the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, so, and I apologize for not having the motion. I created a lot of confusion myself, I think. I'm not sure what it is. Can I have some help pre-stating the motion, Lon?
Point of order was, "Does the Assembly support the project?" So vote yea, would mean this Assembly does support it. And if the louder votes are nay, that means the Assembly does not support the project.
As presented.
And so, just kind of a simple matter of...
Okay, so, the motion that is before us is, "Does the Assembly support this project?" And we're gonna vote on it. And I'm sorry, I can't take any more questions because it's...
Would it be free, though? For, against, or abstaining?
Yeah, abstaining.
All those in favor of supporting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And are there any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Aye.
Okay. You see it? Hear it? Chris? All right. Any other, other business? No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's been a long time since I've done this. And you'll notice I'm not on the ballot tomorrow, so you probably ought to get someone else. The... Sounds like the nays have it. However, it's advisory. I checked another Select Board and our Planning Commission Chair, and they've heard the sentiments. Mike?
Good evening. I'm Mike Taylor, Assistant Chief of the Shastberry Fire Department. I'd just like to ask for a moment of recognition for a...
Can you come up here, please? Come up here, please. Vote him. Yep, please, go ahead. There, do that. Thank you. I'd... You're gonna, you're gonna be unvoted, both of them here, okay?
Go, you're the big speaker.
All right. Yep. All right. I'd like to ask for a moment of recognition for our past resident of the town of Shastberry, Charlie Becker. Charlie passed on the 20th of February at 98 years old. He was past chief of the fire department and 75 years of active service. So it was kind of, it was, it happens suddenly, but I felt there was recognition for a man who served the town of Shastberry in many capacities for many years. And I didn't want this moment to pass. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Motion to adjourn? Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't care if you're opposed. Thank you all for coming. This is, it's wonderful to be able to be back in person doing this.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.